Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Before we begin this evening, we're going to start a little ahead of schedule. I noticed there's quite a few people here, so there's a number of people that want to come up and speak in one form or the other regarding Grassy Plains. So we're going to start that portion of it around the scheduled time. However, we're going to move up items that does not affect the overall agenda going forward. So we'll start. We'll have the public comment around at scheduled time still, 7:30 or therefore afterwards. But beforehand, we'll move up a lot of items, smaller items, as opposed to keep people here waiting for holiday sale, liquor license, and things of that nature. So with that being said, everyone present, may we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Ms. Seale, would you like to start us off with the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, unred, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, may we start with another roll call vote, please?
Yes, Councilman Cahoon.
Here.
Councilmember Morato.
Yeah.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Here.
Councilwoman Souza, here, and Council President Brito.
Here. Next item, please.
Next item is consent calendar.
Before we do that, could I just move to seal the minutes from executive session?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to seal the minutes from executive session, and it's seconded by Councilwoman Souza. Roll call vote.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilmember Morato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
Aye. Thank you. Next item?
Next item is consent calendar.
One question, are the events there, both those 5Ks, are they listed under the consent agenda?
Yes. Yes. So items A, B, and C are all listed under the consent calendar.
Okay. I'll move to approve consent calendar.
Second. Roll call vote.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilmember Morato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
Aye. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next item, please.
We're skipping over the under-licensing approval that is to the next month.
Holiday sales, what we're going to?
Madam Clerk, if I may, the city's requesting a continuance of agenda items 7A1 and 7A2. They are a license, or request for a transfer in holiday sales regarding Lindtop LLC DBA Cliff Liquor. We're looking to set that for a date certain of the next council meeting, I believe that's February 18th.
Yes.
So just to clarify, that's 7A1, 7B1, correct?
Correct. Thank you.
Okay. So then you need a motion to continue those?
Please.
All right, so we'll move to continue items 7A1 and item 7B1 until the next council meeting?
Second.
Roll call vote.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilmember Morato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
Aye. Next item, please.
Do you want to do two separate votes? No, you want, that was just one vote.
That's fine.
Okay.
Crossfit.
The next is CrossFit, Phillipsdale, and that's for a holiday sales license.
Is the applicant present at this time? You want to step up to the podium, sir? You want to just state your name for the record?
Yes, Philip Carroll.
Okay, and you want to just explain what you're looking for at this time for the council?
Just the ability to open the gym on holiday hours.
Okay. Any objections from the council or any questions from the council?
Sam, we're all square away in terms of paperwork and everything else.
Yep.
Okay.
What's the location of the gym? The address?
310 Born Ave in Rumford.
Thank you.
Any other further questions? Would anyone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Roll call vote.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilmember Morato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
Aye. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good luck. Next item?
Next item, under communications, is Coyote 5K to benefit Project Depot at the Crescent Park Carousel, Tracy Johnson Carousel Manager.
Oh, shh. Okay. We'll explain that.
Sorry. It was approved under the consent calendar, so I was just thinking if you wanted anything else you wanted to say about the race or anything. Not yet, we've got to get the DOT and VEM, and then I'll be back.
Okay. Very good then. Thank you. So Madam Clerk, if we can just proceed over to page four?
Yes.
New business, number two?
Sure.
Or the fire chief?
Yep, and if you're following along, that's page four in your docket, under item 12, new business, and that's number two. And that's East Providence Fire Department, council vote to authorize the mayor to execute striker emergency cares contract for heart monitor slash defibrillators and AEDs in the amount of $421,318.90.
If I may through the chair?
Oh, please.
I just wanted to move for unanimous consent to move these agenda items two, three, and possibly four up on the docket. Total vote?
Yeah, second.
No objections?
Any objections?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do I need a roll call vote on that?
It seems to be consent to move the items.
Okay, very good.
Regarding the East Providence Fire Department contracts, these figures, there's approximately $81,000 being funded from the city. It's a grant match, the remainder is already funded through the grant. We approved the funding for each of these contracts, both this item and the next item, at previous meetings. Since the contracts exceed the $50,000 amount, we do need council approval in order for the mayor to enter into these contracts. These contracts have been approved and vetted, and they are subject to the grant. If there's any further questions, I can do what I can to address them, but the council is sort of very well aware of what these contracts are, and they already are funded.
Any questions from the council?
Sir President, my only question is of the $421,000, et cetera, does that include the 80 that the city's funding?
I believe it does.
Okay. But in any event, that's the limit that the city has, we've already approved, is the 80?
Correct.
Okay.
80 or 88?
I believe it's 81.
81. It's 80,722.
Any other further questions from the council?
I do have one, Mr. President. I'm just trying to track my notes, and Solicitor probably doesn't have the answer to this, and it's not going to hold up the vote, but if we could get this to the city and get an answer to this. When I do the math on, you know, what's being proposed versus what we're buying and along with the grant, it looks like it's a little bit less expensive than we originally planned. The provisions of the grant call for us to fund, I think it was 10% of what the grant is. So given that, what's proposed is going to be just a little bit short of what we ultimately budgeted. I just want to make sure that we understand, and we're tracking what happens with the residual in the capital budget, if there is a residual. Also, I think the 80,722 was based on one particular estimate. I think it'll be a little bit short of that. Are we on the hook for that amount or for 10% of what the ultimate cost is?
My understanding of the grant is that it's the 10%, so I'll confirm that we don't overpay and that we track.
That's the way it reads. So, okay, thank you.
Any other further questions from the council?
President, I'd move approval, the contract says presented.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilmember Morato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Brito.
Aye. Moving right along.
The next item is number three, that's on page five. East Providence Fire Department, council vote to authorize the mayor to execute Motorola Incorporated's contract for portable and mobile radios in the amount of $452,296.6.
It's the other half, it's the other contract that's subject to the 81,000 and the 10% grant match that we just spoke about.
Yeah, so just so people are clear, we're not authorizing expenditure of an additional $870,000. Most of that is grant-funded. We are authorizing, well, we're already authorizing expenditure of the grant, our share of the grant, which was 80,722, so.
That's correct.
Any other questions from the council?
No, motion to approve.
Okay.
Second.
We have a motion, and a seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilmember Morato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Brito.
Aye. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I noticed that the director just walked in, Director of Public Works, so I want to proceed in the manner of number four at this time. Pleasure to counsel.
Yep.
With that being said?
It's fine.
Please read the next item.
Department of Public Works Director Steve Koutou, council vote, handicap parking zone request located on 94 Vine Street, East Providence.
Are there any questions at this point in time for the director? Is it necessary for him to come up? Okay, with that being said, would anyone like to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilmember Morato.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Brito.
Aye. That brings us just about on track. Is there anything else that we need to bring up? Anyone else here that's waiting and we need to move up? So we'll proceed, we'll proceed to getting back on track with public comment at this point in time.
Just so members of the public know and understand, before we proceed with public comment, we have a practice that there's a three-minute limitation on public comment. I need to enforce that equally as to everyone. So as you do come up and speak, I will be setting basically a three-minute timer, I'll try to give you a little bit of a warning before you get to that three-minute mark, and then I got to request that you cease comment. That will allow us to kind of proceed in orderly fashion and get through as many people as we can this evening. Thank you.
Can we say that? Excuse me, we say that because we have three full pages of people that want to come up and speak on public comment this evening. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Council President. The first person on public comment is Lucy Pereira. The docket item topic is 24-hour gym access.
Is this Pereira here?
Hi.
Good evening.
Thank you for listening to me. As you can tell, I'm an average person. I'm not a weightlifter or a fitness fanatic. I'm just an average person who struggles to be fit. I have a long list of ailments, which requires me to take a nap, a full two-hour nap after a workout before I go to work, because I do work full-time. With this new ruling, they open at 5:00, it eliminates my nap. And I've noticed that a lot of the people who used to be the overnighters, the three-to-five people, used to go work out at 3:00 to 5:00 like I did, no longer there. They've found other gyms in other cities, which is kind of sad for the business, because we're driving business out. And then I've spoken to the other, to the few that have come back that were waiting at the door at 5:00 every morning, they're frustrated, because now they're rushing. They were, you know, everyone's in a set routine to get their workout in and get to work on time. Some have had to change work schedules, and others are struggling as I am. You know, my work has suffered, and we have one gentleman who comes in a walker, who's there at 4:00 in the morning and waiting for the gym to open, and he knows that it's open at 4:00, at 5:00 now, but poor thing, he keeps hoping that the city will do something to accommodate the people who need to go in the early morning hours, for health reasons. Nobody's there, it's a nightclub, we're not there to buy cigarettes, like you can go to convenience store to buy cigarettes, but you can't go to the gym. Makes no sense. So if you just use your compassion and allow all the gyms, we're there to try to get healthy. And, you know, that's all I ask, is for the city to use a little bit of compassion and common sense when making these rules. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person?
Next person is Stephen Narocki.
Narocki. That's about Grassy Plains.
Oh, Grassy Plains, okay. Thank you, Stephen.
Yep. I have been a resident on Tanglewood Drive for over 25 years. I'd like to address the neglect of Grassy Plains Playground and why the community in the closest proximity to the playground does not want organized sports. My first statement is a question. Why is this park run down in the first place? There are broken lights, graffiti, lack of garbage cans. Both tennis courts, basketball courts are unusable, as well as an ice rink. These issues make the playground less appealing to families, which the park was intended, was originally intended for. With a facelift, we can restore this park to its intended purpose. For one, I would be open to restoring the basketball courts, adding walking trails, picnic tables, as long as a new, as well as a new play structure. However, I am not on board with sports fields for the following reasons. Traffic, parking issues, noise, and destroying of more natural land, and most importantly, erasing Riverside history. I understand Riverside is changing, but we need to stand by our community to restore areas instead of completely erasing them. I am a tax-paying citizen, and I truly hope my thoughts are heavily factored into the city's final decision. Final decision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next person?
The next person is PJ Dopki, and it's regarding Grassy Plains.
Hi, my name's PJ Dopki. Oops, no feedback. I live at 411 Strahl Drive. I'll keep it brief. I think we're probably seeing a lot of people here tonight because Ricardo chose to send an email, or I'm sorry, call some of them, saying that the mayor was out to get them and build a sports complex. There is something to that effect. Am I correct? Did you call Rita with something to that effect?
I did put the word out, but it wasn't about attacking anyone.
Okay, so you didn't call Rita and say that the mayor's trying to pull a fast one?
No, no, I did call Rita, but I wanted to make sure that they knew.
Okay, but you didn't call anybody else?
Anything to do with an attack, no.
I don't believe you, and I'm going to tell you why.
And I will explain that on the...
Feel free. So I think you did a terrific job of hosting a community session where I met many of these people, and you heard unanimously from all of us that we feel generally the same way. What's unfortunate is that you seem to be unable to build effective relationships within the city to get the job done. So rather than work through your personal issues with the mayor, which I don't care about, your inability to get the traffic surveys from the police department, I sent you one I had, rather than work with the planning department to understand what the grant is, you chose to take the people who you know are most passionate about this issue and rile them up, saying that, quote, "The mayor is trying to pull a fast one." Now, my expectation, and I voted for you, and I have been refreshed by the approach, but this is not adequate leadership, it just simply isn't, okay? So my expectation is that you would work together and lead. We need partnerships, and now, we can put the grant opportunity aside, grant or no grant, if you can't have a meeting with the planning department, the recs department, and the mayor's department because of your personal feelings, where all your political football? And that's not right. And I've heard nothing but consistent things here. We all want this park improved. If you have some secret plan you're showing people that you think is the mayor's secret plan, please show it to us, because I have Rita Fallagera walking around saying that "I'm part of this conspiracy now," and I want to tell you, that's hurtful. We've spent a lot of time trying to get people involved in this park, and I will tell all of you who I haven't met, we've done a poor job, we did not go door-to-door. So mea culpa, that's on me. I'm not a professional community organizer, I'm a dad. So, you can roll your eyes, you'll have your turn later. So the bottom line is, please lead, and for the rest of the council members, understand that that's what this gentleman has done. He's not communicated on his Facebook page, "Please be here tonight for the mayor's fast one." He chose to call the angriest people. Now, I don't actually care about organized sports, doesn't matter to me at all. Selfishly, I'd like a playground, because I got a two-year-old. So, you know, if there's somebody out there, and you're my neighbor on Tanglewood, come talk to me, because I don't care about organized sports, I'm not part of a secret plan, it does not matter to me, and you're nodding your head again. I just don't care. If there's a ball field there, okay, here's the thing about the grant, we are not obligated to do what's on there, and maybe Bill can speak to it later if he's up for it, but there is no handicap-capable parks north of Warwick that are really inclusive. Maybe that makes this grant compelling. You know, there's other opportunities that we can do there, so I don't need to be your political football and be personally attacked by my neighbors for your rumors, and I need you to lead.
Thank you, and I will be explaining that when the time comes. Next person, please.
Next person is DJ McHale, regarding Grassy Plains. I apologize if I didn't see you last anyway.
Nobody does. Mike.
Sorry. Mike.
Hello, I'm DJ. I live down on President Ave. I am friends with PJ. Just a little brief history synopsis of kind of what happened. About a year ago, once the new councilman and everybody was elected, we saw it as an opportunity for our group and our family and our neighborhood to, sorry, to reach out and bring attention and bring awareness to the park, and try to bring it, restore it back to what it used to be. There was never any mention of soccer fields, sports complexes. We just want a playground, clean grass, no needles, no glass, no condoms, no beer bottles, things of that nature that our kids can run around and play. As far as Councilman Morato, I don't, I don't understand what your agenda is. Where, where is your alliance? Like, isn't your job supposed to be to speak for the people, right? Yes?
Correct, and when that topic comes up, I will explain.
Okay, so we held the council, we held the meeting a week or two weeks ago, correct? Correct. Okay. And everybody's general consensus there was, we want a park, no soccer fields. So why are you calling the people that you know are going to be angry about soccer fields and telling them that the mayor's trying to put soccer fields there?
I will explain that when the discussion for that item comes up, but I appreciate your comments.
Because me, for me personally, it's a huge, I don't know, quagmire. It's just a big, it's a big problem, and like, you're just not doing your job to the fullest extent. So I don't know what your goal is for your one term as councilman. I don't know if you're trying to drum up more real estate business on Tanglewood, and that's why you're trying to appeal to them, but it's just not really appealing to the rest of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person, please.
The next person, I apologize, I can't, oh, I think this is Rita. Rita Fallagera, Grassy Plains.
I just, can I just say something quickly? Again, every single one of us is sitting up here, not because we get a whole bunch of money or accolades for doing this job. Can we just engage in some sort of professional decorum here when we're talking to people who are basically volunteering their time? That's all I ask. Thank you. Mr. Fallagera?
I would like to start off by apologizing to Councilman Morato. I've been here for a very long time, and I have had a lot of city people lie. Okay, just let out lie. So I am absolutely delighted that Councilman Morato, when he found out that the council was only given half the information, and all on the council, because I called every single one of them, okay, were aware that they were given half the information, although I do know that certain people on the council were aware or should have been aware, because this has been a long-time problem, okay? And we've, this is not the first rodeo that we've had, with people wanting to put organized sports down at the playground. And the first part of what I want to say as quickly as I can is that when that playground was first being approached, broached to the citizens, the residents, they did not want it. There was a citizens' committee, which is always a good idea, because they get to keep certain people honest, okay? And promises were made, the grant was written, the application, never to be organized sports. And where it addresses, okay, active sports, I did contact an attorney to get the legal definition of that, which according to the post by the mayor, you know, and he's the one, from my understanding, that has wanted soccer fields. And not looking around the city and understanding that across from Wantington, you know, there's all that empty land, and you can get there by going onto Willett, okay? And doing the same kind of deal that the city did with Flug Street baseball fields. Give them a dollar a year, okay, and then build the soccer fields, if that's what you want, all across or whatever, okay? And they go in through Willett, and they stay out of our neighborhoods, which were never built to handle that kind of a traffic. So, and I want to thank Councilman Morato for coming to the neighborhood when he handed out all the flyers, and recognizing that Tanglewood Drive was built before there was ever the thought of a playground. And he recognized instantly, and maybe because he's a police officer, that that was never designed to handle that kind of traffic. So I want to applaud him for that, because it's very true. So what I want personally is for the promises made when the original playground was put in. And I have a problem when the, whoever's in charge at the city at the time, whether it be a council, I mean, a city manager or a mayor, they give the people their word, but it's only good until someone else comes along and it doesn't, they don't agree with it. So I have a problem with that, because I think if you, your word should be your bond, and how can we trust you today when eight years from now, there's someone else in charge?
I apologize for interrupting, but the three minutes are up.
Okay, I just want to add that we need to be able to trust the people in this city, and we can't do that if they break their word. And again, I am very sorry for the insults aimed at you, and I think you're a great councilman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next person, please.
Next person is Kim Caskey, speaking in regards to Grassy Plains.
Good evening. Sorry, I'll try to get everything out in three minutes. I just want to thank the council for hosting the community meeting. It was well-attended. Everyone in attendance that was from the neighborhood, with the exception of a couple of people who spoke from the league, were all in agreement. We did leave there all in agreement. We were reached out to to come tonight, just to restate for the record what our, what we had all come to an agreement on, and I did not, I did not receive any negative comments about the mayor from the councilmen, so I just wanted to state that. It's not the first time we've been through this in this particular field. There have been soccer committees formed, most recently several years ago. That soccer committee consisted of DPW, Planning Department, Recreation Department, and a list was created of the most feasible and best locations for soccer fields. Grassy Plain was not on that list. I won't go into great detail about that report. Per the info at the community meetings, fields which are now in existence aren't always kept up with, and they cannot play soccer on these fields, so perhaps funds would be better spent renovating those fields and making them usable. We have a serious water table issue in our neighborhoods surrounding that park. Every time they adjust, for example, they, Shaw's Plaza, when they adjusted the Shaw's Plaza and they opened up the cul-de-sac there, it increased traffic, it increased the water table. They are building right next door a budding Grassy Plains, building a housing complex, all the trees were cut down. That abuts on one side, the solar farm abuts on the other, and the supermarket on the other, Every time they adjust, for example, the Shaw's Plaza, when they adjusted the Shaw's Plaza, and they opened up the cul-de-sac there, it increased traffic, it increased the water table. They are building right next door a budding Grassy Plains, building a housing complex, all the trees were cut down. That abuts on one side, the Solar Pharma abuts on the other, and the supermarket on the other, really squeezing that neighborhood with almost no woods left, nothing to absorb the water table there. It is high, there are a lot of wetlands in there. I'm just trying to go through this fast, sorry. Preserving open space is one of the best things that we can do for the next generation. It's an important task, it's important for all of us. The City of East Providence has very little open space. I don't feel that it's appropriate to build on every square inch and cut down every tree. We do have an increase of animals in our neighborhoods, wild animals, due to the fact that we have been doing a lot of building. So I think at some point, you have to step back and look at that and say, you know, we don't want to go into this last little strip. I also wanted to speak about being insensitive to each other, taking some time to be kind, putting yourself in the shoes of somebody else. This is somebody's neighborhood, and a lot of times on Facebook, you see these snippets and these really not-nice comments to each other. And I think that we're all living in the same city, there are a lot of neighborhoods in this city, and we should try to be, put ourselves in the other person's shoes, and think, you know, if there was something going on in your neighborhood that you were uncomfortable with, you would want others to listen to you as well. And I think that we should just focus on preserving, building on what we already have, refurbish those fields that we already have, look at the proper place, look at the traffic patterns. These are big decisions. When you change the structure of a neighborhood, it's a big decision. When you cover large pieces of wetland with impervious ground, you create a runoff.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, that's three minutes, but thank you. Okay, bye.
Thank you. Next person?
Next.
And before we proceed, I just want to give, immediately following the public comment, I'm going to request the council, or ask from the council, that we move up on council communications, item number C, which pertains to Grassy Plain Park and meeting as well. So, it gives the councilperson the opportunity to respond to these comments that are up here this evening. Next person, please.
Okay, the next person we have is David Seal Jr., speaking on, in regards to Grassy Plain.
And keep in mind of the three minutes as you approach here, when you hear the bell go off, please try not to go too much further than the three minutes.
My talk is very short. I've been on Grassy Plain Road for 55 years. At my president address, I've been there for 44 years. My property abuts the playground. There's no buffer. I have playground right at my backyard, where the kids play and all that stuff. I've watched that playground disintegrate over the years that I've been a resident in East Providence, and it's a shame. Now here we are, and talking about redoing something good, and bringing the playground back, now we have all this controversy. There shouldn't be any organized sports back there, it's a neighborhood playground. Let's put it back to the way it was when I first moved there. The walking trails, and just having things that people actually can use. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next person?
Next person is Dr. Alan DiIello, Grassy Plains and Speed Cameras.
As some of you may know, I abut the woods area on Circuit Drive, so I am always very concerned when I hear about development on the woodlands that directly border the neighborhood. Much of that land is low-lying, it is actually marked as a drainage area on many city maps. And the idea of possibly developing in there needs to be done very carefully. Any sort of development for a soccer field, a soccer complex, a baseball complex, needs to be looked at very carefully. My home already gets water, and it has since 1959 when my grandparents built it, all right? And any developments that are done in that woodland will raise the water table further. Having said that, there's a hundred, there's, sorry, I measured it out the other day, there's approximately 300 acres of land in that woodland, bordering on Oldham School, on the Riverside Middle School, the former landfill, Hospital Road, that whole area is approximately 300 acres. There is room for some sort of sports complex in that land. However, there's no reason why it should have to be connected to the Grassy Plains Park. There are other access roads, there is a, I believe, a state-level road, Forbes Street, that directly abuts that land. An access road could be built, of course, it would take more money, it would take more engineering, but I believe that that would go a long way to solving this current controversy. And another thing that would help is if, when there are public meetings, if the planning director or someone from the planning board was able to go in an official capacity of some sort. Having said that, I want to see Grassy Plains Park rebuilt, that was my childhood park. It has always been in some state of dereliction, and I want to see it restored, and I don't want to see this opportunity squandered. I had also asked to talk briefly about speed cameras. I know there's a discussion about putting speed cameras up. I ask that the council be very judicious in the placement of speed cameras. I know there is a need for them on Petucket Avenue in front of our high school, and particularly in front of Kent Heights. There may also be needed, need of it, on Warren Avenue with access to Martin Middle School, and perhaps on Forbes Street, but I would ask that we not turn this into a money-making venture, that it be done for the safety of the children and of the parents that are bringing their kids to school. And I applaud the council for their quick movement to put speed notification on Petucket Avenue and on Grassy Plains. The sign, those signs are really good, they may be more aware of my speed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next person?
The next person is Denise, I believe it's.
She knows who she is. She's approaching now.
Denise, speaking in regards in, about Grassy Plains.
Good evening. My name is Denise Javory, I live at 26 Tanglewood Drive. I've been a resident of Riverside for the past two and a half years, and I'd like to thank Councilman Murado, because he was very professional when I was approached in reference to the Grassy Plain Park that abuts my property. The playground, definitely, the entry is on Grassy Plain Road. I invite anyone to walk with me every morning when I walk my Greyhound between 6:30 and 7:00 AM in the morning. I have to walk Grassy Plain, even though I walk down Beverly and do a six-block walk. Grassy Plain is a dangerous road. It's a blind corner, you've prohibited trucks on that road. I walk it every day. People don't respect the 25 miles an hour, right? My concern is against building any kind of organized sports, because you're going to add 50 to 60 cars per game, and it's a residential neighborhood. It's irresponsible. It would be endangering the people, not only who drive or walk and live in that area, to add that kind of abundance to the neighborhood. From what I understand from talking to other folks, I'm new to Riverside, that Pierce Field, once the high school is built, there'll be an abundance of fields. Also, my concern is, I've talked to several people who were on the soccer league that night, and my concern is, how many people are associated with a private soccer league? It's statewide, they're from all over the state, and my concern is, why is East Providence taking on this shortage of fields for the host state? I drove Riverside Middle School about three weeks ago, when I first found out about this. The school has plenty of land and back of it to build another soccer field. I was a sports mom for 15 years. My daughter played field hockey, she played across several schools in Massachusetts, hold tournaments, they use schools. They open up the schools, they make money with the tournaments. But you need a bathroom facility, you need a place to, you know, to have food, and you need an organized place to do that. Riverside Middle School, like someone mentioned, there's 300 acres there, that would be, probably be a perfect spot. Forbes Street can handle the traffic. We can't handle the traffic in our neighborhood, and my concern is the safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person, please.
The next person is Mike Rosendes, to speak regarding Grassy Plains.
So my name is Mike Rosendes, I've been a resident of East Providence for 36 years. I'm part of organized sports. So today, I walked Grassy Plains. So I want to reassure you something quickly, because there's a lot of things that go out on Facebook about East Providence youth soccer, taking Grassy Plains, that is not our intention at all. We do know that the mayor used to be our president, he used to run our organization, he is no longer there anymore. He doesn't call the shots as far as what we want to do as an organization. So, everything that you hear regarding a soccer complex going there, I can assure you that that's not coming from us at all. We have the space here in the city. The issue that we have is that the fields that are here are just not maintained. They're not maintained to the standard that we need them. To answer someone's question about how many kids, there are 696 kids in the City of East Providence that play for our program. About 190 are from outside the city. Four of those families that came for me when I used to coach in Petucket, moved to East Providence. So it's not bad bringing people in from outside, okay? But again, the thing here is, I want everyone to understand, we don't have no intentions at all, but what we are looking for is help. We need help maintaining what we currently have. Grassy Plains, I walked today, I put a video up on Facebook, there were condoms, there were beer bottles, there were things everywhere. It's disgusting. It's absolutely awful. So if we as a community can figure out how to make that a park, not a sports complex, you want open field of play, let kids throw a football, frisbee, whatever it may be, that's fantastic. We are not looking for a sports complex. So whatever you hear out there, please disregard anything about a soccer complex, we don't need that. But what we do need is help maintaining what we have and fixing what's there. So again, if you guys have questions for me, I'm the president of East Providence Youth Soccer. You can find me very easily, my phone number's there, if you have questions, call me. I'll stay, I'll answer any questions you may have. But again, just to reiterate, we have no intentions of building a sports complex, we want that to be fixed for the kids. I live two streets away from Pierce Field, and I can walk with my eight-year-old son to Pierce. The people in Riverside should have that same luxury, and have the ability to go with their kids and have a safe place. So if you have any questions, I'll hang out afterwards, but I just wanted to say my piece. So thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Next person, please.
Let's see, the next people, we do have a sign up that says, "Please sign if you're against organized sports." I don't know who put that up, but the people that are listed on here, do you want me just to call them, to see if they want to speak?
Yeah.
Okay.
No?
No, that's not what you want to do? Okay. So we don't do that? No.
Well, if there's someone here for public comment, and they want to speak, I'd like to hear, you know, they have the right to.
Just go through that list and see.
Go right through.
Okay. Karen Ems.
Not here, go to the next person.
Fane Edmondson.
I'm all set.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, sir. Robert Cattier, or Cattler. Lynn Clark. Okay, thank you, ma'am. Heather Fattato. Thank you. Steve Donahue.
Steve?
Steve.
I live on Tanglewood Drive, and I want to comment on the last speaker's said about Grassy Plains. He's totally correct on what a mess it is. We've been, the neighborhood's been trying to get this cleaned up for a long time. When I moved in 21 years ago, we were fighting against the cell tower, because the City of East Providence got money to fix Pierce Field, and they promised them they were going to put a cell tower up, and they picked Grassy Plains. The neighborhood fought it, and after that, that happened, the playground started going downhill. Then they decided they wanted to put tennis courts in, and the neighborhood fought it, and they descend, said they didn't fix the fields. We had park benches and stuff in there, and they came in, they took all that stuff out, and they proceeded to not maintain anything. The tennis courts, we had two of them, they took the fences down on one of them, they took one of the basketball hoops down, courts down. The ice rink, they took the valve out of it, so you can't fill it anymore. We had a volleyball court, they let that go to hell in a handbasket, and the rest of the field just fell apart. I used to call up and I asked, I used to ask, "Why is the field not cut?" And one of the persons that I talked to told me right out, "We only cut the front, because that's what people say." That's a shame. That really is. And the city tries to hold the people in the neighborhood that use that park hostage whenever they can't get what they want. This park needs to be taken care of and put back to the way it used to be. It was a beautiful park when it first came into play, and it was when I moved there, and we couldn't put that back the way it belongs. And all this stuff with condoms and all this trash, needs to be cleaned up. This is a shame. It really is. And as far as people talking about wetlands, I don't know if anybody really walked that park, but there's a lot of sinkholes. And where that baseball field is, at one time, there was a huge sinkhole. I remember watching kids put trash in it, tree stumps and everything else in it. Then the city came down, and they filled it in. So we really need to think about this, and we really need to take care of this playground. And it's a shame that we don't take care of all our parks in the City of East Providence. It really is. And we should definitely find a spot for the kids to play soccer, because my girls used to play soccer when they were young, and they had a great time. And there's no reason in the world we can't take care of everybody in the City of East Providence. But you don't put something like that in a neighborhood. No way.
Thank you, sir. Next person?
The next person is Michael Javory.
Next person?
Next person is Joanne Drain. Or Justin Drain?
Next person?
I think it's one of the ladies.
Okay.
We'll go with the next and save her for when she returns.
The next one, sorry, I believe it's Sylvia Rossi.
Oh, sir.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. We have Lucy that we already went through, Gary Medesia.
Next person?
Tracy Johnson.
Thank you.
Next person?
Thank you. Ronald.
All set.
Thank you. Oh goodness, I don't know. The next one is, the last name is William, I believe it is.
Thomas William.
Thomas William?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. The next, I think it's Jose. I'm sorry.
Next person?
You live on Grassy Plain. Okay, Rachel DeCosta.
Just here, no soccer fields.
Thank you, ma'am. Carol. Carol starts with a last, the last name starts with a B.
Are you all set, ma'am?
I'm all set.
Nope, wrong Carol's, Carol starts with a B. Derek DeCost, I think it's Derek DeCosta. Thank you, sir. Stephen Crowley.
All set, young lady.
Thank you, sir. Kathleen Crowley. Thank you, ma'am. Carol Hay.
I just agree with Rachel and everybody else here. No problems.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Candy Seal.
All set, thank you.
Thank you, Candy. I believe it's David Hay. Thank you, sir. Debbie.
No, thank you.
Thank you. Merrill?
No.
Okay, thank you. There's somebody else underneath that I can't read.
I'll get to that.
Okay. And then Pat, Pat Milley, Milley, M.I.L. Nope.
All set.
I believe that's the end of the list.
Is there anyone that signed up whose name was not called and would like to approach the podium to speak?
Or if Joanne Drain came back? I had her starred. Nope? Okay.
So, thank you all for your voices this evening. We will proceeding, is this Joanne here?
Joanne?
I'm all set.
Okay, thank you, ma'am.
All right, well, thank you. I'm going to move right along, as I indicated, like to move over to council, if the councilman doesn't mind, to give him an opportunity to respond. Um. So we can start that next docket item, which is the discussion? Yes.
That's item C on page number four, for anybody who's following along, which is Grassy Plains Park Community Meeting, January 23, 2020, update and discussion, Councilman Murado.
Any objections from the council, by the way?
None.
Thank you. None. So I want to start off by saying I appreciate each and every comment that was sit here tonight, through letters, through email, through text messages, each and every one. I mean, this is the process, this is what I got elected for. I mean, if you can't stand the heat, get out of the kitchen, as you know, as we say. But I also want to give a history as to how we got to this point with this conversation. And I also want to keep, I want you to keep this in mind, that this park has been neglected, as I've heard over and over again for the past 20 years. And it wasn't until now that this conversation has started. And I want to thank the neighbors, like DJ and the neighbors that reached out to me early on, when I first got elected, a year ago, January, and brought this to my attention. As you know, we, the council, voted for soccer fields, for the capital improvement project. I was completely on board with it. And I was on board, but, I was on board with it because it gave the opportunity to rebuild that park, to refurbish it. It's a great place to be. I, when I used to jog, can't tell by looking at me now, but, you know...
I, when I used to jog, can't tell by looking at me now, but, you know, when they said jog on rounds, Astral, good place to stop, and it's kind of, it's one of those like mystery parks where you kind of look at it and, should I go in there? Someone maybe like, you know, it looks a little sketchy from the outside. So I completely agree, yes, there is room and it should be improved, right? But it wasn't until after that vote that I started learning about a whole different conversation, one that's been going on way before, okay, I even knew, way before I got elected. And it was only fear that we heard from those residents. Everyone talks about it's a city park and it benefits the city. I completely, I 100% agree. However, you have to respect the neighbors that immediately are affected by anything we build in the city. For example, we talk about, and that sounds a mystery as to what those pink ribbons are when you drive into Grassy Plains Park. Apparently, that was a survey for that tower, the cell tower, right? Cell tower would benefit everybody in the city, would benefit me. T-Mobile's a little bit better these days, but it would benefit everybody. But you can't honestly say that we're going to put a cell tower in your backyard and too bad for you that you have to stare at this thing every day because it benefits the whole city. We have to respect those neighbors first. So I set up a community meeting. I wanted to hear from both sides. The community meeting was well advertised. It was announced at two council meetings. It was put in the post. I went door to door and I passed out 150 flyers, okay? I spoke to countless neighbors. Notices went out to every Wattington student, every Riverside student, and even the mayor urged soccer parents to attend my meeting. Unfortunately, or fortunately, the people that are directly affected are those that showed. I can't control that. It wasn't a personal attack on the mayor, okay? I never said that. I got elected by the residents in Ward Four. Those are the people I answered to first. Every one of us up here, we make decisions that affect the whole city, okay? And we are all aware of that. But when it comes to situations in each ward, we take action. Councilwoman Susa does meetings that involve situations in her ward. Councilwoman Conhoun will do the same, and so on and so forth, okay? Every one of us do the same. So I am the voice for my residents in Ward Four, okay? First. That's who elected me. When I look at soccer fields, soccer teams, okay? And I look at, you know, and it's great to have 600 and, you know, plus people, 26 different teams, all great. But we should be also looking at economic development. We shouldn't just be sticking a field, and I'll get to the reasons why, looking into it further, why I'm against the soccer portion of it. But we shouldn't just be sticking a field anywhere, we should be looking at economic development. Take a site, for example, as an idea, the Oldham School on Bullock's Point, right? You have the perfect setup there. Parents come from different parts of the town, different parts of the state, and they drive through those communities, they see the carousel, they see potential shopping, they see where, you know, I'm going to drop my son off, my daughter off at practice, and I'm going to go to Shaw's, or stop at a pizza place on the way out from practice or a game. Those are, that's what we should start thinking, okay? We shouldn't just narrow it down to, here's this wide open piece of land, let's just build on it. That's not what it's about. That's what it shouldn't be about. After that community meeting, the other thing I heard, which I did found disturbing, and I heard it again tonight, we currently have fields that are in disrepair and they're unable to be played on. I find that disturbing, okay? And here we are trying to build more fields, which is fine, but we need to maintain the ones that we have now. I also heard of ideas such as big pieces of land, a big piece of land at Lyons and Mercerav, the old Grants Building. That would be a perfect place to maybe look into that. I heard that the old, the former planning director, Jeannie Boyle, had started conversations with Mobil to build a soccer complex. And by the way, I never mentioned complex at Grassy Plain. A soccer complex off Forbes Street, across from the Jehovah Witness Church, and that complex would potentially connect the road to the current Little League team, which would, you know, it would be a safety, which is one of my concerns, having parents exit onto Muppinak Trail after a game. So, and then the Riverside Rec is one that we already approved. That's, there's a huge swath of land that's going to have a lot of trees cut down, but that's already approved. So my point being, oh, and also Pierce Field is my biggest one, right? Pierce Field, to me, is going to be underutilized once the high school's built. To me, that's the optimal place. You have lights there, you have bathrooms, you can have night games. Is Forbes Street, is Grassy Plains, is that going to be night games in the future? Because one of the coaches that told me, that does coach for the same program, that's what he told me this week, that the plan is to have lights installed and night games, okay? Whether or not that's true, I don't know. If you look at the map of what's proposed for the Grassy Plains Parks Site Plan, you've got to see the circle that's part of what they want to cut down. It's not just currently there, okay? So, again, I did not know that when I voted for it initially. When you look at the initial council, council of 1974, when they pass this resolution, this ordinance, for Grassy Plains Park, there's every mention of everything that's been dilapidated there so far. The ice rink, tennis courts, the playground, there is not one mention of soccer fields, all baseball fields, in that, in that original vote, which was unanimous on December 5, 1974. Seems like a long time ago, but it should still stand today. So when I look at all of this and I look at the complete picture, and I have to step back a little bit, I have to, as I said, I have to first respect my residents that live and are affected immediately. And believe me, I want that park to be rebuilt. In fact, my idea is, since we already allocated the 150, even if we did not get that grant with or without a soccer field, we at least have that 150 allocated to improve in that park. So that's still a win. Where, in the past 20 years, we've had nothing, zero, no interest whatsoever. So I don't get insulted by comments like that, that's fine, that's what I got, you know, that's why I took the position, you know, I got broad shoulders. I respect each and everyone's opinions. It's unfortunate that it seems like a political football, which it's not. I voted for it to begin with. Had I not, then someone could have an argument on that. But once I started learning about the other side of the story, I had to do my due diligence and do what I was elected for, and hear those people, hear those residents. And that's where we are today. So today, I want to bring up, I requested through the mayor's office that the planning director be here, because I have some questions on the application process. And to be honest with you, at this point, I don't know where to go from this point forward. So I want to ask through the chair if we can, Mr. Fazioli can come up?
Please.
Thank you for coming here tonight. So my first question, this is a question that was brought up at the community meeting. The application process that was submitted for that grant, which I have here, and by the way, I did read the traffic study, I read everything that's sent to me, I don't take anything for granted. That development, as far as that traffic study, it boils down to a stop sign at that, at your house. So trust me, I read, I have everything right here, by the way. I think I'm becoming a paper hoarder. But I appreciate any information that's given to me, I don't, like I said, I don't take it for granted. You look at it, sticky notes and highlights everywhere, so. But Mr. Fazioli, if you could just explain that application process, because I know in the original application, it does mention soccer fields, I'd just like to know where we go from here.
Sure. Basically, the application was submitted back in December with the resolution from the council. We'll probably hear back from DM, April. The reason why we apply for these grants and we include, just everything that we want to include to upgrade in the park, if you read the application, it's not just soccer field, it's walking paths, it's playground equipment, basketball, tennis courts, it's just to make the grant more competitive. It's a competitive grant that DM offers every two years. And in the past, the city's been successful in using this source of grants from DM to improve Glen Lyon Park, to build a soccer field behind Martin Middle School. So it's a vehicle that has been successful. This particular, you know, payback is over two and a half times, you would be able to leverage $150,000 to $400,000 to make it a half a million, over half a million dollar project, if successful. If, in fact, we do get the grant award, we'll have to enter into a grant agreement with DM outlining how the money will be spent, frankly. And if soccer is going to be taken out of the proposal, there's a likelihood that the grant award would be reduced.
So it's not that the grant will completely be dismissed, it's just that the dollar amount may be reduced?
Well, it's hard to say. I mean, I really can't say, I mean, I don't, I don't think we've ever been in a position where we've amended a grant request once it's been submitted, but I would imagine just talking to staff in the planning department, if they've been there a lot longer than we would have, they suspect that there would be some modification to the grant, obviously, if soccer was not part of it, because that's a sizable part of the improvements being planned there. There could be that the, they could be, say, they could also just say, look, we changed our mind as another community that's more interested and more deserving and has the support of it. So it's difficult to say.
So at this point, I mean, as a representative of my ward, I have to respect what I'm hearing, what I have heard, the handwritten letters, actually, emails. And it sounds to me like the community wants that park to be rebuilt, okay, restored, but they not necessarily want soccer fields. Where do we move, how do we move forward from this?
I think it's something we may have to have a discussion with DM and see where that is, and obviously have to bring the mayor, his office involved, he's the one that authored or assigned the grant and have a discussion at that level to see where we go. And I think we need to have a discussion also about fields in general in this city. I know the focus tonight is on Grassy Plain, but I was talking to the recreation director, she couldn't be here tonight, but she just gave me some figures. There's 14 fields in the city. Between March 2019 and November 2019, you know how many permits were granted for 14 fields for activities? Let's take a guess.
200?
2,190.
I was in the twos.
So we don't have enough fields to satisfy the demand. And these are fields that include very dense neighborhoods. Pierce Field, where I live, Grassy, Hull Street, Glen Lyon Park, Silver Spring, they're all neighborhood parks, they're all in dense neighborhoods, they all have traffic, they all have people, that's what makes a neighborhood. So when you think about over, close to 2,200 permits from March to November, and she, you know, documents that she has to turn down groups that want space. And we have a field that's approximately 30 acres of usable park space compared to nine acres at Hull Street, 10 acres at Glen Lyon, 26 acres at Pierce Field. We have 30 acres where there's nothing, and we're turning down groups. I think sometimes the city needs to take a broader view of that. And, you know, it's not just, you know, Ward Four, it's really from, you know, Rumford, central part of the city, Ken Heights, and so on.
The Riverside Rec project fields that we, the council approved as a capital improvements, how many fields are planning?
I believe it's two.
Two fields?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not 100% certain, but I know that, I think the plan was for two.
So in addition to those two fields, is it possible to put another field in that area in front of the Riverside Middle School?
I would have to defer to Mr. Kudus, who, he's saying no, so.
Is there a reason for that? At least for the youth 10 or youth 12, the younger competitors? Is, would there be room for that?
Yeah, again, these are the things that I think there's time to perhaps have a further discussion and to have a further meeting on these issues. With a lot of the facts, you know, and, you know, I've lived near Pierce Field for 30 years, and I understand traffic and crowds, but I enjoy actually that, I enjoy going out in my backyard and hearing kids play, and that's not for everybody, I understand that, so.
Is it fair to say that for the immediate future, could we remedy some of the, you know, high demand for these soccer fields by looking into these other areas that were mentioned? I mean, I know the Riverside Rec is going to take time to build, you have to take down lands, you have to take, trees, you have to do parking lots. That's extensive, but it's going to, it's going to resolve the issue in the end. And we also have to keep in mind that the field that, the senior center, it's currently being utilized by the high school, correct? And once the high school's built, that field is going to open up again. You also have to keep in mind that Pierce Field is going to be underutilized, also when the high school's built. And that, to me, is the ideal place to have tournaments and whatnot. It just needs a little bit of modification in widening the soccer field for regulation size, which is a matter of taking some of the track out.
Yeah, I agree. I think taking a broader view of all the facilities and identifying which ones are best suited for different activities. When we put the grant together for Glen Lyon, Grassy Plain, I'm sorry, it was never intent to host tournaments, or it was just a soccer field for kids to play in. And, you know, it's, as people cited right now, the fact, the state that we're over at the parks in now, it's an attractive nuisance, you know, it's very poor visibility, you can't see what's going on in the back, there's, you know, from a public safety point of view, it's a concern.
But even if this was built according to this map, regardless, you're still not going to get a direct line of sight from it.
Well, you know, we have some, we have some ideas about allowing some parking closer to the field, so there will be people, there'll be an avenue, some sightlines to improve that, you know, but there's no plan drawn, but we have some conceptual ideas that we've just said, look, how do we improve this park by providing parking closer to the fields? And right now, it's very remote. When you park, I think you have to walk quite a bit to get to the actual park facility. So there's ideas to do it, and obviously, if we do get the grant, we would hire a landscape architect to map this all out and draw it out and be a lot more precise than what we're working with right now, which is really just sort of sketchings.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to continue because we have all the agenda items, but I just have to say a couple of things, and I just want, I want some direction. Regardless, I mean, Pierce Field is, it's open, it can't be any more open than what it is, and you still have to deal with vandalism. Perhaps the approach of dealing with these vandalisms is on a police level, I don't know what the answer is for that, but it's not a, you know, you're always going to get that, but I think it's more of a policing issue. My question to you, Bill, is where do we move forward from here? What's the next step? Do I, do we rescind that resolution and amend it to remove soccer fields? Do we wait for DM? And the other question also, has there been an environmental impact study in this location, and will there be one? Or is that something that's part of the...
I don't, I don't think there'll be a full environmental impact statement. I think obviously there'll be, if the grant is awarded and we proceed, obviously, we'll have to assess where the wetlands are and where the buildable, where the buildable parcels are. So I don't think a full-blown environmental impact statement will be required. In terms of rescinding the resolution, that's clearly up to the council, I can't really...
So if we were to rescind that resolution and just to remove soccer field and to make certain that that 150, at least that 150 that's been allocated towards Grassy Plain Park, remain there regardless of any DM-approved money, with that, is that something that the council can adopt?
The council can adopt and draft any resolution, I can imagine, right? That would be correct?
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any other questions, and I appreciate the council taking the time for me working through this issue.
I'd just like to pass on, if, you know, the planning department sets its eyes on Kent Park in Ward Three, I think you'd be perfectly happy to have your attention over there if anything comes up, so. Just to put an plug.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Without belaboring this, I'd have to make a couple of comments, and I think everybody had good points tonight. I want to thank Councilman Morado for at least bringing this issue to a head. And I'm only one person and one vote, but I will state this tonight, that I am not going to see in this city that we pit sports groups, youth groups, adult groups, neighborhoods that don't want anything. We are not going to pit us against each other. If I have anything to say about it, we are all East Providence, in my mind, we are townies, townies, I have my county pin that I wear wherever I go, and we are not going to put youth against adults or any other groups. That is absolutely unfair, and you won't get my vote to do anything if that happens. I know Grassy Plains. In 1974, I was a playground counselor there. It was a beautiful park, and for whatever reason, I've only been on this council now, like most of us here, a year. So I didn't have any say before, but I certainly wrote a lot about it and talked about it. The whole playground system, and you need to know this history, was shelved by the city, right or wrong. I didn't really like it when it happened. I was at Grassy Plain, but there were 21 other playgrounds that we had counselors at and kids. I had a couple hundred kids a day at Grassy Plain. They were at Kent Field, they were in Rumford, they were at Saban's Point, they were on Vittner Avenue. They were all over the city. It was like the schools, neighborhood schools, which we've gotten away from, everybody has, we have to, I guess. And I don't know when it happened, eight to 10 years ago or so, maybe more. The city at the time decided to do away with the playground structure. So now we have one official playground in East Providence. It's at Pierce Stadium. I have a grandson who goes there in the summer. It's a great program, and the director does a great job there. But we've effectively shut down all the other city playgrounds, and I don't know why. I guess cost was a factor. The other thing to realize is the building of the new high school is not going to free up a lot of space at Pierce. The only thing it might free up is the big football field, because evidently, and I know Councilman Kahoon has more insight into this, but high school is very close to making it the determination that they'll play football games in the new field behind the high school. So that frees up a football field, but those permits, I'm very well aware of. I've been a league coach and official in Riverside Little League, Riverside Football, East Providence Central Little League. I've helped with school sports, and I can tell you, there are not enough fields. The ones we have, when I was growing up, they didn't even have grass. Hull Street, Kent Field, they were dirt-skin fields. We've at least added some grass now. There's a little league field at Pierce that bears the name of my dad, my late dad, who in 1973 was pushing the city for another little league field. And he died before it came to fruition, and the city at that time named it after him. I am certainly not going to see that get abandoned. And there are only two little league fields there. So when we say there are a lot of fields at Pierce, where? There's the Robert Roderick's Field, which has nothing to do with me, that was my dad. And we named the field for Robert Amrell, who instituted girls' softball in East Providence. Other than that, there's just an open field at the corner of Lyons and Mercer, which may be a soccer field, which could be good for that. I help out in a summer baseball camp, and there are kids all over Pierce Field. When I first got on the council, I fought about the deterioration of Pierce Stadium. Our high school football team went an entire season with no scoreboard, with no P.A. system. We had a former Pierce Field manager tell me he didn't have money to buy a bag of grass seed, that he had to get donations from area colleges who were renting the fields. We've come a long way. People are doing a great job, and we've got a long way to go. So in my mind, we'll find an answer to this Grassy Plains situation. There are other areas. We've already voted to put a field back of Riverside Middle School, which will alleviate the parking and traffic problems on Somerset Avenue. If any of you go there, you know, that's a nightmare. So there is a lot more to do. It's a fallacy that we have a lot of fields. Martin Middle School has no baseball field. Those kids have to truck down a Glen Line. Sometimes they go to Pierce, but there's the high school, and the high school has three or four baseball teams: freshmen, JV, varsity. Then you have East Providence senior little leaguers, all using one big baseball field. Where are all the fields? And what we have, we as a community, it's not the department heads, it's not the bean counters, it's we as a community, are we going to fix these fields or not? I've traveled, I know Councilman Kahoon, probably everyone has here. I've seen Councilwoman Souza on fields, President Britto, Councilman Morado. I go to my grandson's games at Pawtucket Slayder Park. Not an affluent community in my mind, but those fields are beautiful, with the refreshment stand, bathrooms. We don't have bathrooms at our fields. There's a lot more that can be done. So where I stand on this is I'm not going to pit groups against each other. We're going to find a solution. We're not going to build a complex at Grassy Plain, but we're certainly going to restore it. When I was there, they played tennis and basketball, and we had all kinds of activities. We, as a community, let that go. Sorry to take so much time, Mr. President, but I had to get that off my chest. Thank you.
And I'd like to add my little two cents to this, but I'll be extremely quick about it. Obviously, the field has been neglected for a number of years. That's obvious and evident from the voices that I heard this evening. However, whatever direction we decide to go up here, I believe that we already allocated $150,000 towards this park, okay? With that being said, despite whatever happens to the application that we put through from DM, that through the next budget hearing, through our capital improvement, we can allocate another $150,000 to match. So if DM does it, then we could do it in the city, and we'll have a matching grant for $300,000 right there. Whether or not that's the amount that we need, I'm not exactly sure. However, we, as a council, can take action on this. We already allocated 150, and we can certainly allocate another 150 going forward. Thank you.
Any other questions from the council at this time? Before we proceed?
Councilman Britto, that's a message that I was also trying to convey, and hopefully that came across, so, thank you.
Okay, we have, with that being said, as opposed to, I just want to veer off topic a little bit, and I noticed that Mr. Kudo is here this evening, and we have an agenda item that requires for him to speak on behalf. It's actually a resolution. So as opposed to having him sit there any further, I'm going to ask, at this point in time, at the request of the council, that if we can bump up a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract addendum with CDM Smith, Inc., for additional work related to the emergency interconnection and Veterans Memorial Parkway Vote Improvement. So I was asked if I would sponsor this, talk to Steve Kudo about this, and I would, you know, ask that, Steve, if you can just come up here and explain that additional cost that was originally proposed to us, it's in the, it's in, what, $48,000? And if you could just discuss to the public and to the council with that differences for this improvement.
So last July, we engaged CDM Smith, who's served as our water engineering consultant for the past number of years. They're very familiar with our water system. And then given with the situation with the Bristol County Water Main and their pipe break, which they are our emergency supply, they were down. So we effectively supplied all Bristol County water during the past summer. And in the event, say, if we went down, and God forbid, then there'd be no water for any of us, so. We have currently two interconnections. There are pipe connections with the city of Pawtucket on Pawtucket Avenue, and there's actually three of them, two on Aragonza Park Drive and one on Pawtucket Avenue. However, there's no way to control that flow. And so we engaged CDM Smith to design, which are their meter slash pressure-reducing valve vaults at those two interconnections. So in the event of an emergency, emergency only, so if we have, like, no water coming in the city, and we need to have some water coming in, we can open up that system to feed East Providence, you know, effectively. Currently, the arrangement now is if we did do that, which we did in the mid-'90s when Providence Water had their catastrophic break, we experienced a number of pipe breaks throughout Rumford, just because of the high pressure differential from coming from Pawtucket into East Providence. So these valve unit pits would effectively reduce the pressure, we can regulate and regulate the flow. So it's strictly for an emergency situation. So CDM Smith did the design work. We're ready to go out to bid, preparing the bid documents. And then we're looking to, this addendum is to engage them further to provide us engineering oversight and construction and admin services during the construction period.
Is there any reason why this wasn't taken into consideration initially?
I think initially, it was just to get them engaged immediately, just given the situation with Bristol County water.
I'm going to open up the.
So if I may.
Sure, please.
And Steve, we'll start with, I note that, you know, we're effectively, the addendum would effectively double the value of the existing contract that we have with CDM Smith.
Right.
And typically, I'm averse to doing something like that without competition. I do understand, unless there's an urgent and compelling need, that's one justification for it. I do understand, by virtue of the presentation that we were given last year, there is an urgent and compelling need. We have two old pipes basically feeding us water from across, you know, the river, and if and when they go, and that's anybody's guess, we're, you know, out of luck. So I would support taking that action. I have a couple of questions about the contract language. I'm not sure. I actually had this stuff fired up in an email and didn't hit send last night. I apologize for that. So I don't know, Dylan, if you're the best person to address these, but there is, in the terms and conditions, under number eight, I know number eight, termination. Termination there seems to address only the case of, by termination through, for cause through failure by one party or the other. You know, it's, I'm generally comfortable with government contracts and having some kind of termination for convenience of the government. I don't know if that's something that we can possibly work in there and negotiate with the contractor at this point, but, I mean, there are circumstances, right, that the government faces that, you know, corporate entity would not. We had, it looks to me like, when I add up the math, just the number of hours that are estimated, it looks like we're contracting out, I'm assuming there's no materials involved in the professional engineering service.
Correct.
All right, so it looks like we're contracting out at the rate of about $140 per hour. That's a wag. In my experience, that's a reasonable rate for this type of services, so I'm glad to see that, you know, we've got reasonable pricing there. With regard to the items that the city is responsible for, so this would be under Exhibit C and all under Article II or Section II of the contract, there are a couple of things that we are responsible to do. Under 2.1.1, it talks about data. The owner is responsible for providing the following, basically upon request. One is data or services of others. I know that technical data can be very expensive, especially if we don't currently own the data that's required. I just, I guess I'd feel more comfortable if we had a better understanding of exactly what data they'll be asking for, or at least some kind of acknowledgement that they're not going to, you know, hold us to account for something that we don't already have.
Yeah, I'd have to provide a response back to the mayor late afternoon on this, on some of these items, so. And we've done work with CDM Smith on a number of projects, and I look at this as basically sort of a standard language agreement that they have in their contract, basically for any unforeseen circumstances that may come up. I mean, their scope of services is very specific, right? So, you know, if there's something above and beyond, you know, they'd be looking for the city either to provide and/or, you know, we have to review additional scope services. You know, as far as data required for this project, we did all of the in-house survey, we provided the survey. We provided all existing condition survey, you know, effectively saving, you know, money for an outside consultant, or CDM Smith having to do the survey. So we provided that data to them, and they had that, and that's what they worked off to do the design work.
So you don't see any concerns with that?
I don't, for something, for a project of this size, I don't foresee any additional, any new data requests required.
Okay. Is it possible for us to, under 1.1.5, where the engineer will be representing the owner us in reviewing change orders and making recommendations with regard to change orders, is it possible for us to introduce language into that section that states that any proposed change orders that the engineer recommends will be accompanied by an associated cost estimate with that change order? So for example, what I don't want to see is a situation whereby a sub or whoever winds up doing the actual work is recommending change order after change order, and the engineers are laying them through without the opportunity to give you consideration of what it's going to, what it's going to cost.
Right, and that's what's typically done. I mean, they will provide the initial review and the need for any change order, and review that in conjunction with us. It's not like they would not just pass that and approve that on their own.
And I understand there, I'm just, I'm concerned that that passage doesn't have anything, doesn't say anything about cost, right, presenting cost to the owner, you know.
Okay, I'm sure we can add that, and it would be, I'll commendable to that.
And that's, that's it. I'm good.
So Councilman, are you asking to amend the wording, Section 1-1-5 change order and work change directives?
I think, I think I would request that we could, under 1.1.5, if we could include a requirement for the engineer to provide a cost estimate in association with any recommended change order for the city to consider it, to consider. And the other piece that I would like to see is under termination, under terms and conditions, if we can include a provision that allows us to terminate for convenience and not only for cause.
And what section is that again?
That's under number eight, under the terms and conditions. Typically, if you terminate for convenience, you will wind up having to pay something to the contractor when you terminate, but sometimes you don't have another choice, so.
Do I understand that to be a motion to approve subject to those two conditions?
So, yeah, I'll make that motion, but I understand that there may be additional discussion.
That's provided that there's no other questions or concerns that need to be amended at this point in time.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion. Councilman, you made a motion to make the two changes with respect to the change orders 1-1-1.1.5, and it was at Section 8, that is?
Section, number eight, under the terms and conditions.
Number eight.
Under termination.
I've got it.
You got it? Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Kahoon, seconded by Councilman Roderick. Roll call, vote, please.
Councilman Kahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Roderick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
And Council President Britto.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman? All right. If we may proceed now in the order from where we left off to get back on track.
Okay.
Kind of all over the place, but.
And here we are. That would take us to, if you're following along on the packet, it's page three, under appointments.
If I may, to the chair.
Please.
The issue of appointments is, become of some legal interest, given the changes to the charter. In particular, the solicitor's office has done a relatively thorough review of how Section 351B of the charter impacts other appointments. And it is my opinion that 351B renders any ordinance void that can, contemplates granting an appointment from the council to any individual. The appointments for the city are only as directed within the charter, and if there is no express language in the charter on how an appointment is to occur, under 351B, only the mayor has the authority to appoint an officer of the city. It is my opinion that an officer of the city is a de facto anyone appointed to work on behalf of the city. You do have a legal memo to that effect in your possession. I outline, I think it's five separate legal theories at this point on why the definition of officer implies this. It starts with a review of the state ethics code. It continues to go into theories of agency, liability, respondiat superior. And left out of my legal memo, but just for the sake of thoroughness, there's something called de facto officer legal theory, which means that even if someone, if someone reasonably represents that they are acting on behalf of the city... of the city, even if they haven't been appropriately appointed, the city would be liable for their actions, and they would be considered a de facto officer. So if a de facto officer, someone that isn't correctly appointed is considered an officer, anyone correctly appointed would be considered an officer, and under 351B, only the mayor has the authority to appoint officers. So it's a rather cyclical way of explaining that unless the charter expressly says otherwise, only the mayor can make appointments. That is of particular concern for the council, and particular council members, because the non-interference clause in the council section of the charter would seem to imply that any attempt to make an appointment in contrary to Section 351B is very problematic for the council. Now, I know that historically, the council's made many appointments, I know that these appointments here are actually done correctly based on ordinances that are presently on the books, so I don't imagine that there was any intent to go against the charter. My legal theory and memo has only been presented this evening, so I would caution the council against taking up either of these appointments or any appointment unless it expressly granted that authority under the charter.
So through the chair, so I, we've been going back and forth as far as these appointments, who has authority and what commission, committee, so on and so forth. This was brought to my attention, I think right after the docket went out, as a draft, but I want to, I wanted to kept on there because I, I wanted the solicitor to explain it, and he explains it obviously a lot better than I would because he has a legal degree and I don't, so. We're not taking any votes on these, but I just wanted on there as part of the conversation.
Understood.
I know that the carousel is in dire need of members, they don't, they can sometimes not form quorum, so I hope the mayor's office takes that into consideration and expedites that, there's quite a few people that do want to join, so.
To that end, my understanding of how these appointments would work, despite ordinances on the books to the contrary, again, I believe those ordinances to be void, so once those ordinances are void, you default to the standard process. The standard process would be for the mayor to make the appointments and to submit those appointments in writing to the council to give you notification.
So, so that being said, I did send a notification to the mayor regarding the gentleman who is on the docket tonight as a option for the mayor, if he so chooses, to appoint as a War II option. This gentleman has worked in the community and has done multiple things volunteering, and I think he's a good fit into the carousel, much like others who have come forward and want to be involved in boards and commissions. So I hope that the mayor's office takes action in the next upcoming meetings so that we can have these commissions and boards operating like they should be for the community.
And if I can add to that, can your clerk send that application for the, for Mina Rodriguez to the mayor's office for consideration?
Yes.
She's a, she's been on the board, she's not a voting member, and she's been wanting to join, be a voting member for a while now, but hasn't been appointed, so.
Any other further questions or concerns? Okay, next item, please.
The next item is under council communications, Item A, East Providence High School Minority Oversight Committee Report, Discussion and Update, Council President Brito.
I just so happen to be a member of the Oversight Minority Committee for the East Providence High School, which essentially, we work hand in hand and directly with the general contractor for this project. And part of the reason of what this oversight committee is, to see that as a committee, that the minority participation, whether it's the MBE or WBE participation, either equals to or exceeds the 10% that this project is requesting. With that being said, we have still a long way to go, we're making progress, all the contracts have not been signed to date, there's still packages that are being sent out to contractors at this time, but I wanted to first talk about the outreach program, the vendor outreach program that we had this year, January 8th, at the CTC building here at the East Providence High School. With that, with that registration, we had roughly about 115 vendors that attended this event, which was extremely impressive. This wasn't something that anyone was in conern or thinking about achieving at those type of numbers, but it was extremely impressive. And that did not include, there was some difficulty with parking and where cars are going to park, and the first meeting was, you know, was going to be held in the cafeteria, so there was some confusion as to where it was. So essentially, we could have had more than 115, but we had 115 people that had registered and attended this event. The event, again, took place on January 8th, it was, there was a project overview, there was a community workforce agreement overview, there was a review of the bid packages and bid process, and then there was a Q and A afterwards, and then immediately following that, there was a reception that the high school put on for those who attended the event, and they did a wonderful job. Our next meeting is going to be February 19th here, which is a Wednesday, kind of contradicts what I have on the docket, but I'll get to that later on about another meeting that's going to be held that's on here for the 19th as well, but the next meeting's going to be 6 o'clock here in the City of East Providence, City Hall, in the conference room on the first floor, and we'll have, and be discussing another, a number of other items at that point in time. But right now, there are not a lot of contracts that have not been committed at this point in time, so there are packages that were mailed still out to contractors to bid going forward, so we're still looking for those contracts, and we're still trying to attract those minorities' companies to have their participation in this project. So as a quick update as to what's going on with the oversight committee, and I'll be reporting on a regular basis as to what direction we're heading in with respect to the high school. Thank you. Next item, please.
The next item is Item B, Speed Cameras Community Meeting Announcement, Council President Brito.
So I do have on here, February 19th, which I mentioned, which is going to be our oversight committee, it's not actually on the 19th, it's on the 26th, but I wanted to open that up for a discussion to make sure, because I wanted to have a special meeting that day, I want to have it held here in the chambers, I wanted to make sure and give the council people here the opportunity to attend if they choose to do so. All I would need is three votes to have it on this day. If we prefer another date, that's perfectly fine with me, but I want to give the opportunity to the residents to speak for or against this. One of the things that I stated early on, that upon passage of the resolution, that I was going to have a public meeting on this with respect to the speed cameras, and I'm offering that at this point in time with a date of February 26th, which is a Wednesday, at 7:00 PM. But before I make that commitment, if Councilman Kahoon, if you're available to attend, and it's, you're going to be struggling to get here at 7 o'clock, we can always look at perhaps making that meeting at 7:30 as well.
I can make it.
7 o'clock?
I'm a couple minutes late, just go ahead, I'll get there.
Okay, and this is just to talk on behalf of the cameras, to educate the people, because there's some misunderstanding as to what direction that people think the intent is for those cameras, and by no means I would like to address it at that point in time. So again, I'm looking at Wednesday, February 26th at 7:00 PM, and I'm just asking for council approval at this.
Now, does this conflict with Councilwoman Souza has a meeting that night?
Is it the 26th?
No, so we discussed last council meeting that we were booking the council for the charter review, so that would be the same night, which was fine.
But the councilman and I had had discussions about that as well, because I told him I could change that as well.
I think we could do both.
Oh, in regards to that, I think the speed camera is going to be a hot topic.
Right.
Would it be possible to move the charter conversation to March 11th? That would be a, I believe a Wednesday also.
I believe I'm free.
That's a Wednesday.
Is that a Wednesday?
Yes.
Yeah, Wednesdays are usually ordinarily good for me, so.
So March 11th, if anyone's not agreeing with that, is that okay?
I'm okay with that date.
I'm good.
Solicitor Dylan, would you be available for that?
Have a time.
I believe you have more expertise on that charter.
I'm checking right now, thank you. March 11th?
For sure.
That's fine, thank you.
I'm also available on the 26th.
I'm sorry, councilman, you have a time?
Councilman Kahoon?
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm just looking at the calendar, I think we had, I don't know if we talked about this, but I've got it on my calendar, that I think we kind of had a verbal agreement to send potential charter revisions into the clerk a week prior to that meeting, so that would be by the 4th of March then, if we're moving the other one to the 11th.
Sure.
So just as a reminder, you get to do that.
So the 11th is the charter meeting?
Yes, to the clerk or Solicitor Dylan. I forgot.
Send both.
Okay, we'll do both. That work?
Yes.
So March 11th at 7 o'clock, is that good?
February 26th, can we have those advertised in the post as well?
Sure.
Put an advertise it in the posts, in the reporter.
The 26th?
And post it on the, internally on the board as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I think we can put it on the city website for these public meetings.
I'm sure we could, yeah.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Next item, please.
The next item is, we're going to skip over to Item D, and that's Carousel Approved Capital Budget Items Update, Councilman Morado.
I just want to give a quick update as to what we have approved during the capital improvements projects, you know, budget process. So we voted on three different projects for the carousel. The first one, a quick update on the stabilization, gas air engineering has been obtained to begin Phase 1 of the stabilization project funded with the 2020 capital improvements allocation. The, as far as a new building for the clam shack, specs have been completed for new refab, prefab design. Once review is completed by the city's engineer, building inspector, and public's work director, we will schedule a meeting with the mayor to discuss putting it out to bid. In as far as the ice rink, an ice rink and all components was donated to the Crescent Park Carousel Preservation Association for the use at the carousel. All equipment is being stored at the city facility and has been removed from the carousel property, that was a concern of some residents. Equipment will be serviced and catalogued over the next several months. Just a quick update as to what we voted on for the carousel.
Thank you, councilman. Good information there. Next item, please.
The next item is Item E, and that's East Providence Women's History Month, March 4th, 2020, announcement by Councilwoman Souza.
So I just wanted to make a brief announcement, I'll go into more detail at the upcoming meeting as we get closer. March is International Women's History Month. This year, the theme will be Determined to Rise, we're celebrating the 19th, the centennial of the 19th Amendment, which women, gave the woman the right to vote. Women have gone through tremendous amount of suffrage throughout history, so this year we will be dedicating those conversations in this month to those women who have done so. So it's going to be here in the city council chambers on March 4th at 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. There will be refreshments and opportunity for interactions in the four-year. All are welcome and encourage the public to come out. That's it.
Thank you, councilwoman.
Can I just add to that, I want to thank you, Councilwoman, for bringing that up, and along those lines, acknowledge that we know elected officials spend a lot of time out, and a school committee woman, in that spirit of women running for office, is here tonight. I would like to thank Jessica Boe Shane for attending, I know she has many other meetings, and another woman of note is one of our school principals, Karen Costa, who sometimes can be a problem, but she's, she's here keeping an eye on us, and all in celebration of Women's Month, so thank you both.
At least she's quiet this meeting.
She's kind of quiet tonight, yeah.
Thank you, councilman. Next item, please.
Well, that's my place, okay, that's Item F, Community Meeting Announcement, February 26th, Weaver Library, Councilwoman Souza.
So as many of you are aware, the council has been taking proactive charge on really getting to sit down and speak with residents on a more personal level, face to face. As you know, we get a lot of phone calls, a lot of emails, text messages regarding your concerns, whether they're good concerns, bad concerns, or indifferent. So I am hosting, February 26th, at 6:00 PM, Weaver Library Program Room, a community meeting for War II and city residents, I'm not just limiting it to the center of the city, War II, all residents are more than welcome to attend. As we know, there are many issues that face us throughout the city and have common ground. I think it's important that we have a positive proactive conversation where we can come together with ideas and resolve and work through some of these issues, and then I look forward to having multiple meetings throughout the year so that we have follow-up on some of the issues, so that you know where they are and where they stand in terms of progress. Speeding has been an issue, as we've talked about already tonight, rodents, trash, street sidewalk decays, the list is growing more and more as people become more active and voice their concerns throughout the community, which we welcome. So this just gives people another opportunity to do so, and I know not everybody with their schedule is able to make a 6 o'clock meeting, so I do welcome emails with any of your questions or concerns that I will certainly bring up at that meeting, and then I will get back to you via email with those question updates or any comments that may have come up, and then I will probably host some weekend meetings that probably bring a different group that may be available in the community. So I just wanted to put that out there, you will see notices in the post and here at City Hall and on the website also as a reminder.
Before we proceed, just my apologies to the councilwoman, I talked about February 26th without even looking, to be quite honest, your event is on that day.
It is on that day, yeah.
So with that being said, and I'm going to throw a little curveball in here now, I don't know if we want to go back to the original date of the charter, or I would prefer at this point in time at least to move the speed camera meeting or announcement for perhaps maybe March 18th to accommodate the councilwoman's, what she had already had on here for the 26th.
Okay, I'm sorry, mine's the 25th.
25th?
I apologize, yeah, this is a typo on the, on the.
Oh, okay, I take that back.
That's a good typo.
I apologize, because I'm looking down at the agenda and it says 26th, and it's not, it's on the 25th, so that's a Tuesday evening at the library.
And we don't have a meeting on that day?
No.
Okay, so we're good.
So I, again, I apologize, February, Tuesday, the 25th, at 6.
25th.
Meeting month, February.
It is.
All right, so let's keep that as stated initially, 26.
26.
Yes.
We're still on.
We'll move right along to Item number, Item Letter G.
Item G is Revisions of Business Licensing Policy, Ordinances and Procedures Discussion, Councilwoman Souza.
So I have this on the docket to talk about, and it kind of goes with one of the ordinances that I'm putting before the council tonight in regards to businesses and various licenses that businesses can take in the city. Currently, as it stands, we don't have in place really a policy or procedures on how we regulate these businesses throughout the city, other than maybe somebody complaining or disturbance where this, the council can really follow up to see how the business is doing. And then annually, we go through a review of renewal of business licenses, where the clerk's office will see are businesses up to date on their taxes, are they up to date on their water, are they up to date with state fees that are important, that they need to do to maintain licensing within the city? And then if they're not, what's the process that the city does to enforce any violations, or how do we proceed with any violations that a business would incur? Or how do we proceed with any violations that a business would incur? Now, we are a business-friendly city, and we want to see businesses do well and succeed in the city. And I know that there are hardships that come with being a business owner, especially for one of those mom-and-pop businesses, not so much the grand businesses. So we want to be cautious of how we go about looking at these violations and what the procedures is. So I have reached out to our city's Assistant Solicitor to help formulate a policy and procedure that would be able to regulate these licenses to make sure that everybody is operating within city charter and ordinances and state legislation so that we're not, people aren't operating improperly and others are doing their due diligence in keeping their licenses and operations. So Dillon, if you want to mention any work that you're working on?
Sure. When it comes to licensure, it's a property right, and so there are a lot of due process issues involved. Traditionally in Rhode Island, violations are brought through what's called a show cause petition, where the licensee is burdened to show cause why their license should not be revoked, suspended, or otherwise infringed upon. So it's a trial that would occur before the council. The charter sets forth the council as the licensing authority within the city of East Providence. Functionally speaking, because the council sits in a quasi-judicial capacity, it doesn't do any of the investigations, right? You have a separate judge, jury, prosecutor, investigator. So the city departments would be responsible for their different areas of jurisdiction. The clerk's office does a lot of compliance checks, particularly when it comes to payments, both at the municipal level and at the state level. The police do compliance checks. They especially do compliance checks when it comes to liquor. And then throughout the city, there is complaint-driven responses. If there are a series of complaints regarding one business or another, the city can investigate it. And anytime there's a violation, the evidence to support that is brought to the solicitor's office. The solicitor's office issues the show cause petition because the solicitor's office is in charge of effectively prosecuting the case. So the solicitor's office needs to determine that there is enough evidence to support the show cause petition. Sometimes in some municipalities, you allow for what's referred to as a pre-hearing settlement. There's no obligation to do that. Really, the authority to do that only rests with the council. So even if there was an agreement to settle something, it would not be effective unless it was approved by the council. So really what the process is, is to recognize the fact that it's already set forth in the charter. The East Providence Council is the licensing authority. And hopefully, the ordinance will give us a bit more ready identification on how the process works for everyone involved.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item? Looks like that concludes council communication.
It does.
Continue on.
Item is Continued Business. Item A is Discussion Sewer Fees and Water Usage in Restaurants, Deduct meters, Council Vice President Rodrick.
Mr. President, I'm going to ask to defer this to the next meeting. I do have a meeting tomorrow. I'm going to meet with Mr. Kudo and DPW, and also Mr. Fattado from the mayor's office, if anyone on the council, well, Mr. Solicitor, less than three, right? If available tomorrow to join us. But we're just going to do some preliminary talking. This was the issue where a local businessperson came forward and questioned, could we look into the difference between charging a business for sewer usage when some of the water usage is not going into the sewer plant, per se? So there's a lot of background work to do. So I'll move to defer or just announce that we'll defer.
Thank you, Councilman. Next item, please.
The next item is under New Business, Reports of Other City Officials. Dillon Conley, Assistant City Solicitor, Claims Committee Report.
There were two unanimous votes in executive session.
Man of many words. Thank you.
Okay. Next item, we'll skip over number two because we've already done that. So we're on page five now. And that brings us all the way down to Resolutions Number Two. So Item B, Resolutions Number Two. Resolution Authorizing the Granting of a Temporary Construction Easement Over a Portion of Land Owned by the City at Rose Larissa Memorial Park, Sponsored by Council Vice President Rodrick.
Thank you, Madam Clerk and Mr. President, members of the council. This is just a request from the Nature Conservancy and through the city to continue preserving our waterfront and preserving the environment in that area. And they just needed permission to come onto city land. All costs associated with this, all permitting will be borne by the Nature Conservancy. They have some treatment and research they do to keep in this area of Crescent Park and the Rose Larissa Park clean and healthy. So it's a win-win situation. They basically need permission to come onto our land. So I offered to move the resolution. And without reading it all, if anyone has a question, we could read some of it. But it's an environmental request. It's a win-win to keep our waterfront clean in that area. And I can't see any reason not to move ahead. If no other questions, or even with questions, I'll make a motion to approve as submitted.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor by Councilman, excuse me, Councilman Rodrick, seconded by Councilwoman Souza. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon?
Can I just raise one point? Totally support. But in the event, you know, when they start coming on and doing work, can we just ask the city to make an effort to let people know where they're going to be, what they're up to? I know there was a lot of sort of consternation when we had the artificial reefs come in. There were a number of people that contacted me and said, what are these? We didn't even know these were coming in. I'm hanging up my line when I'm casting. So anything that's going on down there gets a lot of attention. If we could just, you know, ask the city, let folks know, either through Facebook or whatever, hey, this is happening. To that end, I vote aye.
Good point.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Murato?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
And Council President Brito?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Next item is Introduction of Ordinances, First Passage. Number one is Ordinance Amendment Juvenile Hearing Board, Section 2-181, Composition of Board, Sponsored by Council Vice President Rodrick.
Once again, this involved research from the legal department regarding appointments. And we had, we had heard that the juvenile hearing board may be under the amount or a quorum. Yes, they're still meeting, but the legal department has put together a solution. And they got rid of that provision that said we could only make appointments in October, and which didn't make any sense because when someone left after October, it meant you'd have to wait another year. So again, it isn't a council appointment, per se, based on the earlier rulings we're getting. It's a mayoral appointment, but it comes to the council, I think. Could Mr. Solicitor for confirmation, or is it just information?
Some of the suggested new language is subject to the approval of the majority of the city council. It still is a mayoral appointment. I don't have any opinion whether or not that conflicts with the charter one way or the other. But as presented, it was completed by the solicitor's office. It's my understanding the mayor's administration is aware of it. So I'm not aware of any objections at this time.
And even if we were to object as a council, we cannot appoint a person directly to the hearing board anyway.
That's correct.
So to do nothing would leave vacancies.
That's correct.
So I would be in favor of getting this done.
Is that in the form of a motion?
That's a form of a motion, please.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon?
Aye.
Councilman Murato?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
And Council President Brito?
Aye. Next item, please.
Can I follow up on that quickly? And Madam Clerk, I've asked you, and you've indicated that this is on its way, but us having access to those applications that folks have submitted, certainly, granted that we're not, you know, making the appointments as a body, for those that we are going to be deciding on, it behooves us to, you know, see what, you know, residents' interests and qualifications are. For this particular instance, I think that we probably have a couple of people that are interested in getting onto this board. So that, may I ask that we use this as an opportunity to kind of remind the mayor's office, hey, we got a couple of people here that might be interested, you might want to, you know, think about. So maybe if we get those applications up and say, hey, you know, remember, you know, maybe we can make some movement along those lines.
Good point, because I submitted a, an application of someone that was interested when we thought that we had, you know, appointment power. So if we can also forward that gentleman's application to the mayor's office.
Yes. And I'll put in a ticket to make sure that the council has their own usernames and passwords to access onboard, which is the application program that has, where people submit their applications to.
Because then we can be the pain in the butt. We don't have to ask you to do it, yeah.
One last question of the solicitor. So this is clear to everyone. Is it not interference, and it is not a problem, if we hear from a resident who says, I would like to be on this particular board, but we cannot make that appointment, but we would recommend that name to the mayor's office? Is that appropriate?
I can research the charter to see if there's a particular issue. There's some very particular language about council relationships with the administration. So I don't want to give you an affirmative decision right now.
Okay.
But in terms of just unofficially referring names and bringing their attention to the mayor's office, just acting as sort of an informational liaison, I can't fathom that that would be a problem. But again, I will double-check and get back to you.
Thank you.
And by the way, I have a veterans' application that was submitted some time ago. If we could submit that to the mayor's office as well?
Yeah, I did see that. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Next ordinance, please.
The next ordinance is Number Two, Ordinance Amendment, No Parking Zone, Patekett Avenue, Section 18-307, Sponsored by Council Vice President Rodrick.
Thank you. Not so much my direct sponsorship, but I was involved with a couple of neighbors, not neighbors, the actual self-help building, Epcat Building, used to be self-help. And I think we're talking about just that limited stretch of, that would affect three or four cars in front of that building. It's such a congested area, and they're looking for some relief in that immediate area. It's a very small area. It didn't seem like a problem. And if there are concerns and we don't want to do it, we don't have to. I'm not, I don't have a passion about it, but it made some sense, and I said I would get it before the council.
At the request of the council? Any questions?
No.
Does that eliminate, that's going to eliminate parking spots?
One.
One.
One spot, okay.
Where exactly is the location again?
Patekett Avenue in the back of the Epcat Building, the old Riverside Junior High Building.
Okay. That's a, I think that's a dead end too, isn't it? Or it's?
It is a portion, a one-way dead end. It's a tight little spot.
No, so. Well, we have, we do have a motion on the floor.
Second.
We have a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon?
Aye.
Councilman Murato?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
And Council President Brito?
Aye. Next ordinance, please.
Next ordinance is Number Three, Ordinance Amendment, No Parking Zone, Brunswick Street, North County Street, Section 18-307, Sponsored by Councilwoman Souza.
So this is on the docket, because it came to my attention, again, a lot of the streets throughout the city and in the center of the city are very narrow. Parking on both sides of streets becomes a safety issue when we're coming down the streets. Large vehicles, safety vehicles like the fire engines have a difficult time coming down. Residents trying to back in and out of driveways if they're abutting these parking areas also cause issues. So this is on, again, just a small section of the street that allows for passage of vehicles moving in and out of that area without any, to provide better safety in that area. No questions, I move for passage.
Anyone like the second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon?
Aye.
Councilman Murato?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Council President Brito?
Aye. Next ordinance, please.
Next ordinance is Number Four, Ordinance Amendment, Chapter Two, Adding Article Seven Budget Ordinance, Sponsored by Councilman Cahoon, Councilman Murato, and Councilwoman Souza.
So we discussed this at a few council, two, three council meetings ago. We put on, it's on the docket now for First Passage, a C ordinance regarding when we receive the budget, the 70 days, a financial review committee, and also an annual capital projects presentation.
So I think we've had a long discussion. We've gone and made some changes. That's why it's been on the docket multiple times, because we wanted to make sure that we had addressed all council needs and concerns and looked through it with due diligence to make sure that we, along with the administration, were comfortable with what we were presenting as a complete for the council. I think this is going to assist in future budget hearings in orchestrating a better understanding of what will be coming to the council in terms of the budget from the administration, especially with the capital improvement portion of it, where we knew that this was something that takes a lot of time. We've run into multiple issues this past budget season with the capital budget. And I think breaking it up gives the council time and due diligence to go through all of this, as it is one of the most important roles of the council that we take on a year. So I don't know if anybody else has any questions. If not, I move for First Passage.
Second. No seconds.
We have a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilman Cahoon?
Aye.
Councilman Murato?
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick?
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza?
Aye.
Council President Brito?
Aye. Next ordinance, please.
Next ordinance, Number Five, Ordinance Amendment, Section 8-5, Closing Hours for Businesses to Allow Extended Hours From 1:00 a.m. until 6:00 a.m. With Council Approval, Sponsored by Councilwoman Souza.
So this is an ordinance that I have brought to the council previously. It's something that I've been working through for quite some time, being business-friendly and trying to meet the needs of the community in various ways. I thought it was important, given certain businesses that were operating out of the scope of the city ordinances, that it was important to bring back so that those businesses had the opportunity to operate as they had intended, which is their business plan, and that benefited the community. In addition to, so initially, when this came up, it had to do with Laundromat, who came into the city, and their business plan was to be open 24 hours. Since then, I have added gym and health clinics. And I've added those specifically because they don't fall under the category of shops or entertainment. So there is a broad language in here that a lot of things can fall under. But these three items don't fall under any of those categories, so that's why they are labeled specifically. It's not to say that I'm specifically trying to assist these three specific entities to get 24-hour licenses. That is not my goal. My goal is to make it inclusive to all and any business as a whole. So that being said, it also does not mean that all and any businesses are going to be approved for extended hours in the city. So this is something that, like a liquor license or a holiday license or special licenses, comes before the council. And collectively, we take it into consideration based on what the business is, where the business is located in the community, and how it's going to fit. So if it's in a residential area that abuts homes, it's more than likely not going to potentially... potentially be a good fit for the community. So, again, that would be at the discretion of the council to make those decisions. Also, in this ordinance, which is different from the initial proposed ordinance that I brought to the council a year ago, it gives a six-month initial probationary time. So the applicant would get six months probation with this extended hours, where the community, the council, police would be monitoring the business, and if no, there have been no issues in the community, no complaints, they've done their due diligence, they've blended in well, then they could get the extension for the full year. And if it doesn't, then they wouldn't be granted that full year, nor would they be granted the license, it would cease at that six-month mark. So they would have to come before the council and be good standing business owners in the community to get the full year. So that was another change that I thought was important to add to this ordinance. I don't know if any of the council members have any other comments or questions. I know we did have a resident that did come up for public comment, who mentioned that she was a gym advocate. I know I've gotten a lot of emails and phone calls from residents who were pretty upset that they no longer had a 24-hour gym that had been operating as such for about eight years in the city, even though we didn't have an ordinance that supported that at the time. I know that University Orthopedics Medical Facility, Kettle Point, they're erecting another facility there that's going to be a surgical site, where they're going to have patients that are going to stay overnight, so they're not critical enough to go to the hospital and have their surgery there and stay, but they're also not safe enough to have same-day surgery and just go home. So they'll be there for an overnight supervised by medical staff. Currently under the city's ordinance, they would not be able to function as such. So, again, this is another opportunity for the city to move forward, think ahead at future developments in the community that may elicit the need to have extended hours. So I don't like to look at it as a 24-hour ordinance. It's an extended hour, and that can be whatever the extension that the business needs. Also, keep in mind, and I think we're going to be adding the language to the ordinance, businesses that hold liquor licenses, you can't operate in the city, or the state, past 2:00 with a liquor license serving alcohol. So that is not going to change. So a tavern, a facility, a bar, neighborhood bar, or a pub, or a restaurant, you're not going to be able to continue serving alcohol in the community. That's, you know, that's pretty set in stone from the state statute. But if it makes the council feel better that we put that wording there, so that it's in black and white, that's fine with me. I have no issues. If the city solicitor's office could add that, I'm perfectly okay with that.
So if I could request a motion to amend, to add that no liquor, no liquor shall be served after 2:00 a.m. within the City of East Providence?
Per the state, right? That's the state statute.
There are, there are a multitude of state statutes. It depends on what license you're talking about. Ns and BXs are until 2:00 a.m. BVs, CXs are until 1:00, Cs are until midnight. So there are a lot of tiers. Hotels technically are, you can apply for 24 hours, but it's only for service inside of guest rooms. Theaters have a separate license. It's, it's pretty antiquated, and there are a lot of layers to it.
So, I'm not quite sure, I mean, I guess I'd have to refer to the clerk's office as to what the various liquor licenses, the current in the city. Most, if not all, I know establishments in the city stop at 1:00, serving, and I believe that's by ordinance we have. If not, I know that's just the practice in general. But if the city clerk could just verify that, and then based on that information, add that to the ordinance?
Sure. May I just ask one question? And Councilwoman Souza, and I guess for you, too, Solicitor Conley, what is insufficient in the language currently in this draft, right, to avoid a situation where some, you know, someone thinks that they have the authority to sell liquor after the posted hours? I mean, to me, I think it's, right, I mean, we cannot overwrite what, you know, override what the state statute is.
That's correct.
So, does perhaps getting into that mess, which, by the way, I don't know how you know anything about that, but getting into that, does that kind of take us down a path that maybe we don't want to go into with what is essentially a simple ordinance to begin with?
That's a policy determination. As it stands, there will be no legal way to operate a liquor license after 2:00 a.m. within, anywhere in the state of Rhode Island, City of East Providence included. In order to get a 2:00 a.m. operation, they would need to apply to the council for a BX license. That's considered a special type of license, based on DBR precedent. What everyone's used to is the BVs and the Cs, which are your neighborhood bars and your restaurants. You can tell if you're a neighborhood bar, if there's no menu, and you can tell you're in a restaurant if there's a menu. But they operate very similarly.
Because my preference, Councilwoman Souza, if you were okay with it, is to leave it as written. I think it's fairly succinct.
I'm good with that, too. I know Councilman Morado, that's his, being law enforcement, that's his major.
So I had, I did have concerns, you know, I had concerns when it was first introduced. I've lived it. I'm still living it. I even got a T-shirt out of it, as they say. I've broken up many bar fights at 1:00 in the morning, believe it or not, in Bristol. So I understand, I know what the police department goes through. My concern with, when this original conversation came up months ago, was, you know, opening that door and allowing these liquor establishments to be open way beyond the 1:00 hour. Nothing good happens after midnight, as far as I'm concerned.
Except working out.
Except working out. And I didn't want to put that burden, another burden, on the police department. But I am satisfied with the solicitor's explanation of the state statute, which governs that anyways, so, and supersedes any ordinance. To Councilman Kahoon's point, I think it would be kind of redundant, I guess. If the state statute changes, then we would be out of, you know, so. I, I don't have any issue as far as that goes. I'm satisfied with the state statute.
My concern is, and always was, and I'm for the health clinic, I think that's beneficial to the city. I think it's a necessity. But again, when we get into the laundromat gyms, you know, give or take here with the gym, I can go back and forth with, as far as the gym is concerned. But again, it brings back to the laundromats, being open at that time of the evening. I see this as at some point in time down the road, and maybe 10 months, a year, perhaps even two years, that this will turn into something entirely different than, or a lot bigger than we anticipated. And what I mean by that is that when we start allowing certain businesses to be opened up at certain times of the day, or early morning, that just opens up other businesses to say, hey, you know, well, if this business is going to do it, why can't I do this? I just see when, and I think I stated my case with respect to laundromats plenty of times prior to this evening, as to how I feel about those type of services being open 24 hours, or open to the wee hours of the morning. I think it's a recipe for disaster going forward. We have a nice, clean city at those time in the morning, early morning, and I think we're opening up more and more problems as we proceed by extending hours, and it's extending hours today, and tomorrow it's 2:00. When you say entertainment in the city, I don't know exactly what that means, what type of entertainment. Now, when you have a company come up in front of the council who says, you know, we're going to grant Company A, but then, for some reason, we don't grant Company B, because it's at the council's choice to make those decisions as to who's extended and who's not extended, then we're picking and choosing what companies can and what companies can't. The way we have it now, it's across the board. No, no companies can at this point in time. We open up the doors going forward by saying, you can, but you can't. You can't, but you can't. And I think that's a rabbit hole that we're going down. And again, I don't see this happening anytime in the near future, but going down the road another two years from now, or perhaps even sooner than that, that just creates an opportunity for one business versus another business to extend their hours more and more. And if Company A does it, Company B's going to want to do it, Company C's going to want to do it. It's not only going to be gyms, but it's just going to be passed on from one company to the other company. And before you know it, we're going to have all these companies that are open, extended hours of the evening. You know, we hear about, or I hear about some of the issues and problems, although we have gasoline in our, four gas stations that are open 24 hours, but if you talk to some of these attendants as well, they'll tell you, on Friday or Saturday evening, after the club's closed, and they go in the gas station, it's a problem. A lot of them have issues and problems at those times. So, you know, you might not have a problem today in a gym, but at some point in time in a gym or a laundromat, and, you know, gym, I'll give and take a little, but, and I understand, you know, when the woman talked about having the gym open, it was having the gym open at 4:00 in the morning, or 5:00 in the morning. Some people like to work out that early. But once we start getting into 24 hours, where a gym is open to 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, 4:00, I just have, personally, I have issues, and more importantly, I have concerns that somewhere down the road, that we're opening up this, we're opening this up for bigger problems than just what we have here.
So my, I think the most compelling thing to me was, and we talked about this before, we talked about this notion of a six-month sort of probationary period. In hearing, you know, that the one particular gym, which had been operating 24 hours essentially without permission, was no longer allowed to operate 24 hours without permission, I understand that there was an impact, for example, to law enforcement officers who work 24 hours, and may or may not have an opportunity to go to the gym at other times, or are finding themselves there in off-hours. When I was on base, a lot of times, these services were open or available 24 hours, just for that reason, for people who were working, you know, weird shifts. I think that having this six-month probationary period in here gives us the opportunity to really see what somebody's going to do during, you know, get an idea what might happen during those hours. I'm not, I guess, maybe because I've always kind of been a night owl myself, I'm not necessarily of the opinion that it's just bad stuff that happens at night. I think plenty of bad stuff that happens during the day when people are running around. So I think that we put in the necessary protections to go forward, understanding your point, Council President, I understand your concern. I think I feel comfortable with it the way that it's written. I do have one question about the permitting fee. Here it indicates that, you know, the fee for the permit, the fee for such permit shall be $125. We talk about someone applying for a special permit, having the probationary period in place for six months, and then if that six months goes well, they get it extended to the year at the council, the council's discretion. So is that $125 paid for the special permit and then not paid again if that period is extended for the full year? Or it's, I'm afraid it's not clear to me in the ordinance whether, you know, that particular entity would be hit twice, if you will, for a $125 permit.
As my understanding, when I, when it was drafted with the solicitor's office, it was an annual fee. So that was the one-time annual fee to have the special permitting.
Okay. That said, I'm done.
So with that being said, with police officers working out early in the mornings because they have that opportunity to work out during that time and away from people. My conversations, and not recently, has absolutely nothing to do with this ordinance. Police officers are friends of mine in the city of Providence, for example, specifically don't work out that time in the morning, and more importantly, don't work out in the cities that they work out in, is because of the people that they arrest can be sitting right by them in a bench, bench, working out with, along with them. So the last thing those police officers want, at least the friends of mine that are in the city of, in Providence, is to be going to a gym in Providence and working out beside a kid who they arrested last week or the week before. And that, so they specifically stay away from that. They stay away from the gyms in Providence, and they go to wherever it may be, whether it's Cranston, or Warwick, or whatever it may be, because they don't want to have that interaction with those, with those people they had arrested at some point in time during, you know, a month or two prior to, you know, whatever it may be. And this is, again, my conversation with them has nothing to do with this. It was just always a long, extended conversation we had. Some of them don't even work in the city. Why? Because, oh, excuse me, don't live in the city, because, you know, the guy they arrest today is the guy they're hanging up or around tomorrow. And that's just through my experience with police officers that I know, at least in the city, that contrary to what you're saying, that they just prefer not to be in that area where, which is in Providence, for an example. And I would take it, or probably think that in East Providence as well, more importantly. If I'm a police officer, the last thing I probably want to be doing is working out at 2:00, 3:00 in the morning, knowing that anybody that I arrested a week or two before, or even perhaps a month or a year ago, could be working out alongside me.
Sure, but they could be buying produce at the grocery store with you, too, right, if you happen to live in the same town, or, right? Or going to the movies?
Yeah, but that's in, that's in passing and going. It's another thing for me, you and I, to be working out here for an hour, versus I see you in a grocery store, and you're on one side, and I'm on the other side.
I guess I'm ultimately comfortable with it, you're not.
Okay. No, I'm not. And, you know, however way it wants to go, it goes, but I could tell you, it's going to be unfortunately, hopefully, nothing happens. I hope that nothing happens. I don't wish that anything happens. But to see that this going forward, that it opens up the door down the road for other issues and problems at some point in time, where you're going to have a whole slew of businesses coming towards now to extend their hours.
So if I could have Dylan just explain a couple of things that might ease, or maybe not, because I know you're probably pretty steadfast on your opinion, but a couple of sections in here that might.
So this is, this is more licensure. This has to do, again, with sort of the quasi judicial and sort of the powers that the council has. I think the council president brought up an excellent point about how you grant someone a license, but don't grant someone else another license. You're allowed to use your knowledge of the community when you make those decisions, and you can have findings to support a denial for one reason or another. That'll be at the time of granting. The other thing you're allowed to do at the time of granting is you're allowed to set conditions on the license. So a common practice for, say, a 24-hour CVS is to require that the whole exterior of the building has video cameras, and that the video footage will be turned over to the police immediately upon any incident. Circumstances or conditions like that are relatively common. There are actually convenience stores that aren't open to the public, they only do delivery 24 hours, so you have no access. Pizza places, no window service, delivery only after a certain period of time, these are all the sorts of conditions you can place on it. When you talk about a probationary license, that's, that's a critical component, because a probationary license can be removed without cause. Councilman Kahoon dealt with this issue when we talked about a contract earlier. The city doesn't need to present any case during the probationary period, it just takes the license away from you, and there's nothing you can do about it. After that time period, the city would need to do the show cause petition and show some level of cause. Entertainment, there was a question earlier about what constitutes entertainment. Believe it or not, as we're speaking into these microphones and they're amplified, this would probably qualify as entertainment within the state of Rhode Island. It's a very low threshold. If you're in a restaurant and you hear music playing over the loudspeakers, that's legal. If someone plugs their acoustic guitar into the loudspeaker, illegal. Trivia, illegal. All of these things actually require entertainment permits. The denial of an entertainment permit is rather interesting, because it actually goes, the appeal of a denial of entertainment, or the revocation of entertainment goes by writ of cert to the Supreme Court of Rhode Island. I can guarantee you, the Supreme Court of Rhode Island doesn't really care very much whether or not there were a musician allowed to play, or not allowed to play, at any particular restaurant. So those denials are usually just steadfast, they're one and done. I, just wanted to address that those are the policy things that are implicit in this ordinance, but not necessarily explicit, because licensure is a complicated area with a lot of different overlapping jurisdictions and rights and authorities.
That being said.
If I could add, I think the-
If I could add, I think the probationary period should help alleviate some of the concerns that have been mentioned. We have the right in a very short period of time to rescind this. We've got a six-month window. If it looks like it's not working, or there are problems. If we go back to when that one gym was open around the clock, I don't know if we've gotten a reporter on it, but I haven't heard that there were problems in the middle of the night, or maybe there were, but...
And again, I said with gyms, I'm kind of...
Sure, yeah.
...here with gyms, but when we start talking laundromats, and then it's, oh, this laundromat's open, let's do this laundromat, or this restaurant's open, you know, we go tit-for-tat.
Well, I'm willing to, you know, see what that looks like in six months. If we are having laundromat brawls at 3:00 in the morning, well, we'll revisit this, and so I'm willing to go give it a shot for a probationary period.
Okay. Any other further discussion from the council at this time? With that being said...
I make motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Councilwoman Souza. Anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Cahoon. Roll call, vote.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.
Councilwoman Souza.
Aye.
Council President Britto.
Aye. This is first passage, there'll be a second passage on this next meeting.
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. Next item, please.
If necessary, reconvene an executive session.
Mr. President.
It's not necessary.
Move with Durmond.
Second.
Roll call, vote please.
Councilman Cahoon.
Aye.
Councilman Morado.
Aye.
Council Vice President Rodrick.
Aye.